Good evening. I'd like to call this Wednesday, June 11th, 2025, meeting of the City of Manassas Park Planning Commission to Order. The time is 7:00 PM. My name is Lester Finkel. Sitting this evening are Michael Carrera, John Evans, and Kevin Patack. For a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Evan Tulioz.
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next gen item is the approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, would anyone care to make a motion to approve the agenda as is?
Some move.
Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next gen item is adoption of minutes from our April 9th, 2025 meeting. When I reviewed it, I did not have any changes to offer. Are there any changes from other commissioners? Okay. Seeing none, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the bidding minutes from our April 9th, 2025 meeting as is?
Some move.
Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously. I do not see any members of the public present at this time, so we'll move along. We have, the first agenda item is a 2232 review entitled Rugby Storage Yard. And this time we'll turn it over to Administrator Barry.
Actually, Chairman Finkel and members of the commission, I'd like to actually just combine these since they're basically the same review instead of kind of going through all the redundancies again. So I'm going to lay out the foundation of a 2232 review and go over the different characteristics of each.
So that'll be both for the rugby storage yard and the reverse angle parking project?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And before we get started, we, so a 2232 review is required under state code. We don't have, the city doesn't have a adopted policy for how that's to be done. And Calvin and I have discussed that that is certainly something we want to make sure that gets into the updated comp plan as a policy and how we move forward with reviewing public facilities. But it is required that the planning commission review it. There could be a public hearing, but those are one of the things that needs to be decided by the governing body. But since we're not there yet, we're just bringing these here to you for the review that's required.
I was looking at the code, just, it was the first time I had read it. It looks like we can call for a public hearing. The governing body can definitely require a public hearing. That's how I read it, is that the commission does have the ability to request a public hearing. At least that's how I read it.
Okay. I just, I read it as the governing body's the one who says that you can hold it.
It could require it, for sure.
Yes.
There's no question.
Right.
I read it that it was.
Okay. Well, you might be right. Yeah.
Good. I just wanted to make sure we had everything at our fingertips that we need to, because this is the first time I've seen this type of an agenda item on the four and a half years I've been here. So I just want to make sure we're very measured in how we move forward on this.
Correct.
The other thing is that substantially in accord. I didn't see a definition in the code when I was looking. It might be there, but I didn't see it. So I want to make sure commissioners have a chance to figure out exactly what they're dealing with when it comes to that. What does it mean? Because it's definitely more than 50%. It's less than 100%. And it's, does it, you know, does it factor like 75% or 80 or 70? That's something that I want to make sure we're comfortable with as a commission as to what exactly that means to.
And certainly you're entitled to do that. I don't think it's really a mathematical equation.
Sure.
But I think it is, the words are left there purposely.
Yes.
But we are going to focus on location, character, and extent, which is what is required.
Okay.
It is certainly up to you to decide, you know, whether it's in conformance, how much.
Substantially.
Yes. Correct.
Yes. Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So just, we kind of already just touched on this, but you are supposed to bring public facilities to the planning commission for review to see if it's consistent with our adopted comprehensive plan. A lot of times, and why you probably haven't seen these is because if it's part of a rezoning, that counts as that 2232 review, because it goes through the process. These are our own projects done by the city, so it's not something that the governing body is really going to review, except for any kind of initiation of a contract for construction or assigning funds for design. So we have two public facilities. One's a storage building and one is actually, I would call it a widening of the road because we're going to have to actually acquire additional right-of-way to provide this reverse angle In some discussions, there was that the owner of the apartment, a budding apartment building, was going to actually make it their property, but it was kind of a back and forth, and so it was decided that they really wanted it to become, you know, right-of-way, so the city owned and maintained. So as it says, you cannot construct, establish, or authorize these type of facilities unless and until the planning commission believes that the general location and character and extent are in accordance with the adopted comprehensive plan. So I'm going to focus on the rugby storage yard. So I put up a little inset map there. It is on the northwestern corner of the city, tucked, very well-hidden. I don't know if you drive by, you'd even know it's there. And it really is, it really, well, it's on the edge of the city as you can see from the map. It is this, the whole parcel is the crescent-shaped parcel you see here, and that is 10 acres. And it's taking up about 36,000 square feet of that property. So for the zoning and the land use designation in the comprehensive plan, that parcel is zone PF, which is good. That's public facility, so any park or storage facility that is owned by the city or any government agency would be permitted there. The surrounding is a single-family for zoning purposes, R1. And for the land use designation, it is designated as recreation, and it's identified in our Parks and Rec chapter as open space. There's really just one sentence associated with this in the Parks and Recreation chapter, so there is not too much guidance here. And so it is a designation of recreation. We have the private institution, which is a place of worship just south of that, and then we have the single-family, which is, you can see in the map on the purple. So in reviewing this storage yard for performance for location, now, it does not, it does not have public facilities, excuse me, public and utilities, which would be the most appropriate land use designation for it. But I think it's something for the commission to consider that, given the fact that it's really a small portion of this property, and given, I would say it's an accessory use, that because it's storage, which could be associated with Parks and Rec, that it still is appropriate and can be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. There is a statement in the comp plan that you're supposed to have consistency and coordination with inter-agencies. Although this is anecdotal, I was told that there was some agreement and discussion between the Parks and Recreation Director, along with the Public Works, basic crew, the head of the Public Works crew, that they decided to, and agreed to, construct this storage yard there many years ago. So, you know, in that spirit, that kind of serves as one of the statements here in the comprehensive plan and says that inter-agency coordination took place. Here's an aerial of the existing storage yard. You can see that it has some of the storage bins made out of cinder block. Materials are tarped, as you can see. And then, just so you know, there's some fencing for, I'm sorry, I'm losing track of my thought, for erosion sediment control. So that's kind of a second barrier. And they do have a perimeter fence as well, eight-foot perimeter fence, as you can see on the slide. If you aren't aware, the capital improvement program is actually a component of the comprehensive plan. And so it is important to note that this project has been in the CIP. It's no longer there because it's been fully funded, but it has been in the fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 CIP. And here's one of the sheets during that timeframe. And you can look at the pictures, there are actually more close-ups of the quality of the yard. So the improvements are necessary. I took a little screenshot, a close-in of the actual engineer plans. So what you can see here is, one of the big items is the stormwater management facility, that will help with the runoff and sediment from the site. There is going to be a wash rack, so they can wash off vehicles. And then this is a collection area, sediment basin here that will collect any of that, and then it channels to the stormwater facility. There's going to be constructed bays. Four of these will be undercover, so that will help with the maintaining those materials and keeping them dry. And then this is going to be a storage building, a 30 by 30 storage building, where they will put the waterline materials. This is, the main function of this yard is for water main breaks. So they do have the dirt, which they excavate out of the ground, so they put that there. They have the different types of rock that, and stone, I should call it, that they need to put in to bed the pipes when they break. And then, of course, they have the actual pipes, and that's what they'll be storing in the yard. Just real quick, there is going to be lighting there, which is going to be very helpful to the Public Works crew. There, I think there's only one light there now, and I was told that they do use their parking lights on their truck, or their headlights on their truck, to help them see during the middle of the night, because usually that's when water main breaks happen. And the site will be paved, so it is in gravel now, and I guess, you know, the dirt is coming through there, so this will be a more enhanced facility. And of course, there will be privacy fencing and two gates. There's going to be two entrances as opposed to one. So for consistency with character, there's certainly items in the comprehensive plan that talk about maintaining Public Works equipment and buildings and to enhance their operation, which this certainly is doing, and as well as the CIP, including such items in the budget to make sure that they're properly funded and capital budget. And specifically for maintenance of the city waterlines. So this is just really showing the buffering and the additional landscaping that they'll be doing around the site. So this, again, is Manassas Park. Rugby Road and beyond is Prince William County. And then this is part of the open space parcel. So you can see that they really are putting additional vegetation here to screen more from the, our residents that are on, I believe it's Holden Drive, at the terminus there. There will be another, a fence that will also have slats, so there will be screening. They're putting landscaping within the site and along rugby road on the northern part of the property, and will be screening it around the stormwater management pond as well. So they're doing a good job in replacing some of the trees that they are going to be removing, but I think it's going to be quite similar to how it is now, because you kind of just drive by it, and there's one little drive aisle there, and you wouldn't notice, because it's huggly tree. So for the extent of this project, you can see that it is providing screening and buffering as provided in the comp plan, and it is trying to minimize the visual impact of the buildings. So with those items, staff does believe that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I'm happy to move on to the next reversing of parking. I did want to give a bit of background on this project, since the commission really isn't familiar with this. This was done through a contract agreement for parking. So I'm going to kind of focus on the background, so it could get a bit familiar with it. It is kind of complex, if I may. So the background is, since what we now call Park 170, which is those two buildings adjacent and catty-corner to the new city hall. Those were constructed around 2007, 2008, but as part of that, they had a parking agreement that would be on city property, and it was considered a ground lease for parking. And those were 150 spaces in front of the old city hall, and then 200 spaces at the Connor House property. I don't know if you've ever been, had the opportunity to go back there, but there is several spaces in the back of Connor Drive. So in order to get the whole downtown development to work, they really needed to address this ground lease. And in working with the owner, the now-owner of Park 170, their name's called Hosta, that they had to do a lot of negotiation. And in that, they were trying to ensure that their development, city center, had sufficient parking in the downtown. And as you can see from the list of spaces, that is what, and these are, some of these I combined, but these are actually identified in the contract, that this is, if these are all provided, then they would suspend the ground lease, the original area of the ground lease. So it does include the, the RE garage that's currently under construction. It does include our tenor park, which is the Phase 4, if you recall, which is the two 10-story apartment buildings. They were supposed to build a surface lot for this Park 170 building. That hasn't happened yet, but it is still a requirement, so either the city needs to do it, or the developer will. We are, that, as far as I know, we haven't, it hasn't started yet, but it certainly is something that needs to be done as part of this agreement. There's several spaces on Manassas Drive, on-street parking, and they're actually, they're actually prospectively saying that there has to be 60 spaces on the property that's at the corner of Manassas Drive and Euclid Drive, that's just north of that property. That language is actually in the comprehensive plan, so that is certainly something we'll be looking for it if and when that property redevelops. Now, there were also optional parking that could be done at the city's expense. So one was reverse angle parking, and the other was reconfiguring the loading spaces that's near Little Bow, in this downtown area, to two parallel spaces. The city did receive a letter from the owner of Park 170 that they did want and requested the reverse angle parking. And that occurred on March 29th, 2024. So staff has proceeded with that concept and designed that. And just by background, there was a study done on how to increase on-street parking in the downtown, and there were several options provided. This is, the reverse angle parking is one that was recommended, and I think the one that the governing body supported as well. So that wasn't like it was just done by chance. And the study is identified in this ground lease, the amendment to the ground lease. I just wanted to quickly go over these areas that show the location of what I was talking about. So if you can remember the old city hall, there were all these parking. This is the one that has the ground lease, and here, back here, now, this is part of the Phase 4 rezoning, which this will eventually go away, and that's why there's parking commitments with that development. So these are the ones that have the ground lease and need to be addressed, and all those additional parking that was provided in the agreement needs to be fulfilled before that the ground lease will be released on these properties for parking. It's not necessarily a great map, but it does, this kind of shows you where all this other parking is. And these are the buildings I'm talking about, the city center, and so it's really all various different parking areas surrounding those buildings. I was not part of the negotiations, but I'm sure they, you know, certainly had to ensure that there was more parks, there's more parking company in the downtown than they're giving up as an incentive to actually modify the agreement, because there really was not any motivation for them to modify that agreement at all, because they had what they had. It was just the apartments, and it was doing well. But with a vision of a downtown with mixed use, our city manager at the time felt, you know, parking was a driving factor, and couldn't really do anything until these ground leases were terminated or revised, and this was the way to get here. So hopefully that gives enough background. It is quite confusing, so that's really just a two-minute version of that agreement. So that is one of the reasons why the reverse angle parking is here. I'm just going to go through the zoning and land use designations. This was the business I was talking about that was going to require the 60 spaces. It is zone B2, even though most of it's, well, it looks like industrial buildings, but actually there's car dealerships in there, so it's a property with a lot of non-conforming uses. Interestingly enough, the Manassas Drive, as well as now what we call Park Central Plaza, has a zoning category of I-1, and it was not rezoned as part of any of these developments because it didn't cross the right-of-way lines. So it is technically zoned I-1 still, and everything else around it is zoned MUD, the different phases of the downtown redevelopment. And you can see that all of this is within the city center land use designation, which is, of course, our downtown. So this is the location I'm talking about, is this specific row of parallel parking spaces, and those were the two loading spaces that were mentioned as one of the options. So for consistency in the location, there's several aspects and items in the comprehensive plan that identify substantial conformity of this project with the comprehensive plan. There was a significant section in our transportation chapter about parking, realizing that the downtown was going to be having challenges for parking. And again, that was kind of really why the businesses at Park 170 that now are being filled, the commercial, ground-level retail, is that because there really was not adequate parking. And so this was emphasized in the transportation chapter about how we really needed to focus on that, ensure that we had parking solutions for commercial areas, and again, ensure adequate parking for commercial areas of the city, specifically for the downtown. Hopefully you can see this. So they are going to be taking right-of-way, I do have a slide that kind of shows where that is, and so they are going to be providing angled parking, which basically, and a dedicated aisle where you will drive this way as the traffic moves, but then you'll reverse in to the spots. And then the existing through lanes and turn lane will still be there. So in order to do that, they needed to acquire, of course, more land for the parking, as well as the drive aisle or safety aisle, as I think it was mentioned in one of the reports. Yeah. So technically, there is 12, there's 11 reverse angle, and there is one parallel right there for this project. Interestingly, there is, there's an existing fire hydrant there. It's not going to be relocated. They just created a little landscape island for it, which I thought was pretty inventive. This just shows you the landscaping, as well as the distance that it's going to be from some of the businesses. I think the minimum will be about eight, I think it's eight feet from here, so there, it is going to, that's sufficient enough sidewalk, so, but it does get narrow at this end. And they will be providing concrete. These areas were landscaping in them before, and then they're doing supplemental plantings there. And this shows you how the actual car will go when, to use this reverse angle, as I So for the character and conformance with the comprehensive plan, angled parking is specifically called out in the transportation chapter, and identified as a potential parking solution, which is what we have exactly here. And there is emphasis on the fact that because the city center development district is in its beginning stages, you know, point-of-use and easy and efficient parking is still necessary. So that is one of the reasons why we're, besides the agreement, but it does make sense to provide as much parking as we can conveniently to those new businesses that we have there. we have there. So this rendering shows the area that's going to be needed for right-of-way. This is essentially all streetscape now, plantings and walkways. So that is certainly going to widen the street and the activity of reversing angle parking is certainly a change to what's there now. So it is appropriate for the planning commission to review that because these are certainly issues that require review under 2232. And most similarly, they, you know, again, the comprehensive plan talks about on-street parking in various locations throughout the commercial corridors and for new development and redevelopment. And again, this scenario really does highlight all those aspects in this parking design. So staff is recommending to the planning commission that we, that the rugby storage yard, as well as the reverse angle parking is in substantial conformance with the comprehensive plan. But of course, that is your determined to make, determination to make. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on these projects.
Commissioners, what I'd like to offer is give us a chance to, listen, we appreciate the presentation that helps to put some context around what we were reading there. I'd like to give commissioners a chance and myself, as part of that, a chance to consider it. So if we were to come back our next meeting to, and if I may, just to let commissioners know, I'll just read something from the Virginia Code on the meeting. It says, and this is just for commissioners to, to consider, but it does say that, let's see where I saw it here. There's a, there's a, there's a section here on definitely that the governor, governing body can require a public hearing. It also says that the commission may hold a public hearing. So I just wanted to make sure that we, as the commission, know that that is an option for us. But I would like to give the commissioners a chance. Are you comfortable with at the minimum tabling it? Would you?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Do you need a motion?
You comfortable?
I'm comfortable as well.
Okay. John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, that's, that's great, Michael. If you would.
Yeah, I move that we move this item to the next, to the next meeting and also probably schedule a public hearing for.
If you want, yes, we can definitely schedule a public hearing. That, that would be fine. So that's, that's probably a proper way to do it. So yes, okay.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nastily. Thank you. Appreciate that. And is it possible for commissioners to have a copy of the code with the, I mean, I looked it up, but it would be good for us to be able to see at least the portion of the code that is applicable to what we're looking at. Because there was, there's other sections about, what was I see, cellular towers and I mean, it goes on into other solar panels, I think. I saw telecommunications facility, so that's not what we're considering here.
Yeah, the solar panel and the telecommunications, from what I recall, it kind of exempts those, unless they're like new facilities that are, you know, meet, are of greater height and whatnot.
Sure.
But they, they do have exemptions for several, especially co-location of telecommunications facilities and they're called small cell towers as well. So those are, we do them administratively.
Sure.
But yeah, there's no.
For us, I just want to make sure we have the portion of the code.
No, sure.
That's the 2232 for what we need for this. That's great. I appreciate that. Thank you. That would give us a chance to compare that to the presentation you've provided to us, the detailed.
Sure.
Documents you've given to us and then we can have the, the hearing next month and be at a point to, to make a decision, hopefully at that point.
That's great.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Cool. Great. Then we'll move along to item 7C is amendments to the planning commission bylaws. Commissioner Carrera, I know you had a.
Yeah, so I have always a recommendation for section 2.1. I know the, I know state law laws up to 15 members and I don't think we need more than five and I know the council would like to streamline some of that. So I'd like to at least change the language to consist of five members appointed, you know, just final.
Yeah, I mean, that, they're your bylaws.
I mean, I would like that.
And you certainly can amend them however you want. And if you see items in there that do need to be changed.
No, everything else looks fine. I mean, I just think we don't need, I know the state law is made from five to 15 and I, I don't hope that it would ever get stacked like that, but I think five is sufficient and it's more efficient.
Sure. Absolutely. We can, we can make that change if you include it in the motion.
Yeah, I would support that as.
Yeah, 15 sounds like many.
Yeah, I think five is good.
We can always increase it down the road if we get more population that gets to that point or if, but I'm fine with five as well.
Well, it was, there was seven at, at one time and it was reduced to five.
When I got off, went down to six and then went out the first time I got up and down to five.
So yeah, we can definitely amend that.
So I mean, I just think it's more efficient, so. Make a motion or shut?
Are there any other?
Questions on that?
Okay. Any other thoughts on the bylaws or is everybody good with what?
Do you need a motion? You don't need a motion, are you just?
No, I believe you do need a motion because we need a record that they were amended and I know the chairman has to, has to sign the bylaws.
So I move that of the Manassas Park, planning commission amended bylaws, are the bylaws, section 2.1 be changed or updated to consist of five members? Just the language be replaced to be consist, to consist of five members appointed by the governing body, just that first sentence.
I'll second, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries nastily. Thank you.
So does that cover the other items?
Yeah, because there are.
We had no comments on those unless we.
I just have a question. So I was reading that, is it, does that mean state law changes? If you have under 5,000 people, you don't have to have a planning commission?
No, no, no. They, you can, what?
You can substitute it?
You don't have to review site plans. The nature of this was, I think they are trying to, the development community is trying to streamline and speed up, if you will, the approval process of site plans and so in subdivision plans. And taking it to the commission or governing body for review does take time. And so that was completely taken away from, from the planning commission and the governing body. Now, a lot, a lot of jurisdictions just do it administratively, but there are others, including us with the planning commission, take them to either the commission and/or the governing body. So.
Do you know if it's advocated by like smaller jurisdictions, like towns and stuff?
I don't know the history. I'm assuming it was the development, the development community. And I, I'm assuming they, I don't, maybe, I don't know where they came up with the 5,000. Now, they're saying that the planning commission can review them, probably because it's so small. That I don't know the history of.
It's the upper one, you're right.
Yes.
Thank you. I would think of the other way around.
Well, I, I know this and I actually think they were trying to reduce the review times. I think they've stayed where they are and they're, they're actually going to study this and believe I read that there is going to be a, you know, a study or committee reviewing this. But this was kind of the first item that they did was to take out any kind of body review of site plans and subdivision plans. So, but on that note, that doesn't mean I can't bring them to you for informational purposes. So I am looking to the commission to see if you're still interested in just for information about the site plans that I'm approving. I don't, yeah, I don't know if, have the, everybody's heard what I just said, but we'll wait. But yes, this is really just to modify two code changes. One, which I mentioned about all the requirements of any kind of body review is not permitted anymore. And the second one is they did change the advertising date about the, when the second public notice has to be advertised or before the actual date, which is five days, which I just found comical because they just revised it to seven last year and now that, I guess, people were not happy about it, including myself, because you literally had to like do the publication, the notice three weeks ahead of time. So with five, it gives it, you can actually have it the week before, which makes it, I think, easier and more logical. So changing that back. I, I would, since I mentioned it because I'm not sure everybody heard me, I'm more than happy to bring the site plans to the commission as informational items, just to keep you abreast of the development that's happening. You wouldn't be able to vote on it. They wouldn't be informational items, but I think as the, as the commission, you would be interested in that information.
Yeah, that'd be great, Mickey, because seeing the site plans does help us as a commission to put things in context.
Yes, agree. Agree.
Are we good with the, the one motion that was made? Because I'm fine with all the other changes in it.
Yeah.
Good?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
You think you need, I'm sorry. I guess I would think that maybe we need to make another motion because I think that one just focused on the number of commission members, but I'll defer it.
So then we, just the motion for adopting or accepting, adopting the bylaws as amended, including the change from 15 to five members and including changes that are presently in there?
Yes, I think that would certainly clarify.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nastily. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we can go to the informational update from Community Development's staff.
So we are still working on the comprehensive plan, RFP. We're still in negotiations. Hopefully we're about, almost there, but not quite. And we maybe even, well, I'll just say that during the summer, bring you new information and when we do have the actual consultant involved onboard, you know, there may, we will certainly go over the information and what they'd like to do. But, and you know, with, one of the first things we are going to do is do a schedule. So, and they of course want to meet with the commission. So those are things that you can be looking forward to in this process, but it's not as going as quickly as we want, but I think starting in the summer and then kicking off with the school year might actually be good because we do want to get some input, especially from our student population with, for the comp plan. So I think it actually, the scheduling might, might be in our favor. So, but we are still working on it and haven't forgotten about it. And we are, all staff is really looking forward to getting this process started. And I believe I did mention we have two rezoning cases pending. There might be one coming next month if it's ready. So those are one of the residential developments that the city negotiated with city owned lands. So they will be coming very shortly to, for review. And I don't believe there is any other informational items that I can think of. Callan, do you have?
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nastily. The time is 7:45.
Thank you.